Gentlemen. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's January the 20th on a beautiful day, just before it gets cold again, as they said. But I'd like to welcome everyone here and everyone that's watching at home on TV. At 6:02, we will start and move right along to tonight. First, I'm going to call on, in just a second, Councilman Jim Gallagher for our prayer, after which we will -- I'm asking you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag behind him. The last several meetings, I have mentioned in general for us to remember, as a council in the city, to remember all of those, everyone in our midst that has had -- has lost a loved one. Folks, it's just, it's getting on and on and on. I'd like to also, if someone, everyone leaves their marks in different ways, but there are just a few that have, that jumps out is the death of Mr. Ed Stowe. And Ed was for years and years and years so active with the city and so many committees and so many other things that he was on. He was CPA and his office was just down the street. Just a wonderful, wonderful man, active, especially with children and the Optimist's Club and with his church and so on there. Also, Ms. Doris Yarver, she started by herself, single-handedly, I believe, the library at the Woodhill School and ran it for years and years and years and was just a wonderful, wonderful person that liked to help children, and they loved her. Next was Mr. Joe Davis. Funeral was, let's see, a couple days ago, and he was our councilman with us from 1979 until 1985. He was mayor pro temp in 1979 and worked right up here at First Federal Savings and Loans for years and years, and we certainly want to remember his family. Certainly, last but not least is Mr. Rodney Wilson, who has been with the city, what, Ed, 25 years or so, and he's passed away, and we're certainly sorry to hear about that. And to everyone who has been witnessing pain and suffering, that some that have been here forever and some that haven't, the Craig family and the Craig, her job has been work with people at hospice forever and ever, years and years, and just people that are so giving like that, has had a death there. And so, we want to certainly remember those, and at this time, I would ask Councilman Gallagher to lead some prayer.
Let's bow our heads and close our eyes. Dear Heavenly Father, I'd like to lift up these families during a time of hurting that they are going through with the loss of their loved ones. Lord, I also ask you to bestow upon this council wisdom for us to be mindful of what we're doing in terms of our votes and how we will impact lives to come, Lord, and years to come. I just pray, Lord, that you give us wisdom, you allow us to help the citizens of our great town, and I also want to remember the soldiers that are overseas. Ask you to be with them, Lord, and help them through their trials and the families that are here. And, Lord, bless this time, for it's in your son's strong name we pray, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I guess we probably need to excuse a couple councilmen. Put that in the minutes, this would be a good time to, I understand. Of course, Mr., Dr. Carlin told us, he asked to be excused at the last meeting. Would do that individually, you think?
It's about the same.
Okay, and Mr. McHateer is under the weather, I understand. So, is there a motion to excuse these two?
So moved.
This is a second? Okay, discussion? All in favor? Thank you for having me excused. Item C, under the adoption of the agenda, I would like to add, if I may, 1A before end of the regulation, well, I would go ahead with it shortly. It's adding an agenda item to discuss the changing of a name of a road, and so, actually, we could go ahead and do that, or I can go ahead with the minutes. Let's have the approval of minutes of the December 16th meeting, please.
So moved.
Second here, sir.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Okay. You ready? Okay, well, just come on.
Mr. Mayor, you want a motion to approve the agenda, adding that item that you did?
Adding 1A, yes, my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you. Go ahead, then, I'll leave it at 1A. Go ahead. Yeah. It's a presentation item E, Melody Brady, Director of Financial Services, Reference Fiscal Year 2014-2015 Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to announce to you that the city has received the Government Finance Officers Distinguished Budget Award for the current year, fiscal year 2015 budget. This award represents a significant achievement by the city. It reflects the commitment of this council and staff to meeting the highest principles in governmental budgeting. In order to receive this award, the city had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well the city's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operational guide, and a communications device. This is the 22nd year in a row Gastonia has received this distinguished award, and we are one of 52 jurisdictions in the state of North Carolina that received this award. There are approximately 652 cities and counties in the state, so we're one of 52 that receive it. I'd like to thank those who make it possible, Crystal Falls in our budget office, Vincent Wong, Suzanne Gibbs, our Assistant City Managers, Flip Bombardier, Larry Wood, and of course, Ed Munne, for making it possible. Thank you and congratulations.
That's one. Thank you very much.
Crystal's going to bring the award to you. It's heavy.
That's great. Crystal? Thank you very -- that's a lethal weapon. Wow. Very nice.
Careful, Jim. Throw your back down.
I believe that would make our back better, Brenda. Yeah, it would. That is, that's a good, wonderful award. That's great. Okay, thank you very much, ladies, and we're proud, we're proud of you and we're proud of the presentation and the award. Okay, that's item E. There is no sign up for public expression, so let's, I'd like to go to 1A and I would just begin discussion on this a little. It's come to my attention and others, you know, this has been a wonderful, wonderful week for this city and for many, many other cities. Martin Luther King Day, Martin Luther King Week, we have Martin Luther King Plaza across the street, monument, there's wonderful presentation over there, awards, too, congratulations to Mr. Jim Biggers and Judge, Honorable Judge Colwell yesterday. I, there's been conversation, and it's been brought to me, that it seems like that probably, if you stop and think about it, most every city of any size, some small cities, towns, all have a Martin Luther King Street, or a Martin Luther King Boulevard, or a Martin Luther King Way. And it's been requested, and I've thought about this a good bit before we certainly, we've got a little ways to go to get it set in motion, but I would like, at this time, to ask someone to consider making a motion, that at the next council meeting, which will be February 3rd, that a resolution set in a public hearing on the, to be on the agenda, to rename Marietta Street to Martin Luther King Way from the intersection of Franklin and Marietta northward to Marietta and Walnut, which is that light right here where we parked. With the public hearing being held at the 17th meeting, excuse me, at the February 17th meeting of the city council, of course, meaning it has to be resolutions, it has to be a public hearing, but, so this is just a motion to get that in the works and have the public hearing. Once again, that would be Martin Luther King Way from the conference center, from Franklin and Marietta, coming this way, past the courthouse, down to Walnut Street at this time, which is, which is right here at the stoplight. And it passes, of course, crosses over long, crosses over the railroad, and does, of course, is, goes by the Martin Luther King Plaza. Now, is there a motion, or can I ask for a motion to start that in, to start that in motion for the next meeting?
I'm proud to make that motion in honor of Dr. King's memory.
And just --
I second.
Just for the record, it will be Martin Luther King Junior Way.
Yes.
Correct.
Right. You know, we've got Ed Munne Way, and that's about all we got, is Way, so we're going to use the word, no, if that's certainly, and that was what came to me, is Martin Luther King Junior Way. And I think that it would be a, we'll certainly get into it later because we're in discussion, but I just wanted, the only thing I'd like to say is that I think that some folks are, like me, they're getting a little more, I just heard, by the way, I'm heartbroken, I just heard on the news that, what do you call it, people at a certain age, a group of people that are certain, what's that called, Ash, the?
Baby boomers.
The millennials?
The millennials?
Baby boomers.
Baby boomers.
Baby boomers. Baby boomers started in 1946. I missed it two years, and all this time, I thought I was a baby boomer. But anyway, I know that we're getting some age on us, but I think a lot of folks would like to see this more for their children, their grandchildren, and their children and on further down. So I think that it's a major, major move for the city of Gastonia, and I'm honored and proud to certainly be a part of it. Okay, any other, yes, sir?
Your Honor, we had an earlier discussion on the specific location, and just for clarity and for our audience, that, among the folks that had requested that, that seemed to be the location that most embodied Dr. King's influence in our city, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And of course, that is for the reason behind the monument and the plaza, which I believe is named all the way down to, right across the street here, if I'm not mistaken, the plaza. These guys would know that, but I believe that's what it is. Any other comments or questions? Okay? Does everyone understand that the motion is to get a resolution started for the public hearing?
Yes.
All right, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand, please. Thank you very much, both. Thank you very much, everyone. It is unanimous. Appreciate that very much. The approval of municipal election filing fees, item one, presentation by City Manager Edward Munne.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is an item that we have to do prior to every election. The election won't be until November 3rd, 2015, but we have to establish the filing fee, state statute requires us to do that. The minimum is $5, the maximum is 1% of the annual salary. What Gastonia has done recently, the last several elections, is they've used the 1% annual salary, which would be $171.90 for the mayor's seat, and $147.90 for city council seats. But again, the city council has the ability to either go as low as $5 or as high as the 1%. So this is for your action.
I would make the motion that we approve as recommended, using the 1%.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you, unanimous. Thank you, Ed. Well, since she just came in, what a perfect time. Item two, Offer to Purchase Contract, City-Owned Property Neighborhood Stabilization Program, 517 North Marietta Street, Gastonia, Tax Parcel ID Number 221285. Maria, yeah, how do you say that?
Not quite sure, but Maria. Mayor, City Council, we have received an offer to purchase a home located at 517 North Marietta Street. This house is a three-bedroom, two-bath home. It was built with NSP program income, and we were able to use a lot that was purchased with home funds to build this NSP home, offering this great opportunity for this homeowner. This home buyer does meet the NSP guidelines, which is 50% of income. She has met with the lender and been pre-qualified, ready to go. And this is a full-price offer.
Full-price offer?
And we do have --
Rare these days.
Yes, rare.
We do, are asking to be able to give a 2.5% commission to the selling agent.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion? Second? Okay. All right, any other discussion at all? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Myra. Okay, item three is an item for discussion, Proposed Stormwater Ordinance Amendment. Mr. Thorne Martin, I look around and I've narrowed it down to you.
Good evening, members of council. Staff has been working, reviewing the stormwater ordinance, and the reason we're doing that is we're looking at other communities, see what they're doing, looking at our commercial areas, seeing what impact it's having on those as far as redevelopment, redevelopment. Small sites came into mind because we've had some issues with a lot of small sites requiring detention, where in other communities they are not. So with the, out of our evaluation, we came up with two areas, and one was the impervious area where detention is triggered, the number of square footage of parking lots, rooftops that triggers detention requirements. The other was the redevelopment, what we call the 50-50 clause, that's where, and I'll get in more detail into that, but at one point, if you go to the 50-50 clause, you have to provide detention for the entire site, not just the additional impervious area. So what we found in the impervious threshold, city Gastonia currently requires that 10,000 square feet of impervious area detention is required. All of, most other communities use 20,000 square feet. The reason Gastonia used 10 was because on the thoroughfares, you have a small commercial and it drains into residential areas, and it has created problems with the residential sites. So that was an effort to control some of the stormwater for the smaller sites. The problem we ran into, or we're seeing, is that a smaller commercial where they're trying to extend parking lots, very small, 10,000 square foot is not a big area. So if you're a small business, you're trying to expand your parking lot, restaurant, detention's kicking in, and you're having to put underground detention, you know, it's problematic there. The one, but the, like I say, the original intent was to pick up the stormwater that's running from commercial onto residential, and we've had some sensitive areas there, and we do recommend that we look at those closely in the future, regardless which way we go with the ordinance. The redevelopment 50-50 rule, what that is, if, the original goal was acre centers, if you redevelop acre center, you would provide detention for the entire site. There's not enough room to expand over 10,000 square feet where detention would be required. What we found was that's creating a lot of redevelopment problems. It's cheaper to go somewhere else further away from the city, internal portion of the city, and that's a big problem, because if you go over 50% redevelopment, you know, a good example would be Gaston Mall. They had to leave 50% of that existing mall not to provide detention for the existing portion. Target required it, but the existing mall stayed at 49%. It could impact, well, we're seeing a lot of impact as far as folks redeveloping and in the extent, you know, you're getting a lesser quality where they're trying to leave a portion of the site. So that was one of the other things we're seeing, that's why we're recommending deleting the 50-50, so you're only, and go into a 20,000 square foot versus a 10,000. The 20,000 is more consistent with all the other communities, and if the 50-50 provides for incentive for redevelopment, because that was, we've seen a problem there, and also for smaller sites. The, as what's indicated, this is just for information and staff, we need some direction as far as taking it to a utility committee, or bringing it back for more discussion and a vote at a later date. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Martin?
Two questions, Thorne. One, with the 50-50 that you're talking about, the third bullet point that I have listed down here, where it says by eliminating the 50-50 rule, there would be no requirement to install detention basins and runoffs of these sites, wouldn't be to reduce during redevelopment. My question regarding is to work with the developers to avoid significant impacting neighborhood parcels. How would you work with the developers if you don't have anything set in stone, so to say, so to speak?
Couple things we can do, we, you're not going to be able to add a large basin, we know that, but there will be, if you redevelop, you'll add a lot of grassed islands with trees, landscaping, we can go in, we can have some rain gardens where the water goes through, percolates out a little slower. You know, you're going to have less impervious area, and we can modify those areas to slow down some of the water. It would not meet our, the ordinance, but it would have an impact.
Okay. The other question is on item, I guess it's E for variances?
Okay.
That a person may petition the city for, or the stormwater commission, if they have unnecessary hardships? That's for like a citizen who has a problem with stormwater and can't meet the 10% guidelines that we have in place currently?
Correct.
Okay.
And we, I don't, we have not seen, we have not seen those, because if, most of the basins we have are commercial, or all of them are commercials at this point, so at that, to date, we have not received a request for a variance.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, that's great.
Mr. Martin, if I understand what you're saying right, I just want some clarity on that. We're talking about eliminating the 50-50 rule?
Correct.
Okay. Which, if we eliminate the 50-50 rule, then that would certainly be more business-friendly to redevelopers, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, what you're asking direction from the council is to look at this and so that if we've got an opportunity to make some of our ordinance more business-friendly, that's what, that's what you're asking for?
Yes.
Fine, thank you. I like, any time that we can do something that is more business-friendly to the city of Gastonia, I think that that becomes -- to the city of Gastonia, I think that that becomes a win-win for everybody.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Not, not a question for Thorn, but you said you wanted some guidance. Do we need to make a motion to put it on the record, what we'd like for them to do, or a straw?
I think normally these have gone to the utilities committee, have they not?
Yes.
And then on to council. It doesn't need an advertised public hearing to amend chapter 14. It's just normally come through the committee first before actually being voted on.
Mayor and council, that's correct. I think the goal tonight is just open discussion. Is this an ordinance framed at least preliminarily in a form you would like to see us move forward? And if so, typically stormwater would go through the utilities committee, but we'd be glad to take it to any committee, but that one kind of made sense. But tonight was just open dialogue. Is this a direction you would want to move forward in?
I'm for it, so.
Dave? Yes, sir.
Flip, sorry. Quick question. I know we've had some meaningful dialogue in the past with our ad hoc builders association group. Have we floated, no pun intended, this out to them as far as input on, on the positive ramifications?
We have sent that draft to them. I don't know if we've had any feedback yet, but I would be very surprised if they would be object to this type change in our ordinance.
Do we know when we sent that out, or roughly?
First December. They're meeting tonight to discuss it.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Okay. The item four, Mr. Munn, is the draft 2015 advocacy agenda.
This is the 2015 advocacy agenda. It's very close to what we approved last year, and this is just a document that the city does normally every year as the state legislature and Congress are getting together to act as a guide. And sometimes there will be a piece of legislation that will move forward quickly. And they say, well, what's the city's position on this? Well, the city itself, you know, we, we're part of the League of Municipalities, and we're also part of the metro mayors, and they have their list, and they're statewide in their, and federal in their scope. With, with what we're, what we have here, this, this is something for our delegation and for anyone that wants to know what, you know, the city, it's not comprehensive, but really what the city would like to see the state legislature, the governor, the Congress do. And first, we have listed the federal priority issues, and they are exactly the same as they were last year except for something new at the bottom, which is clarify that EPA's definition of the waters of the United States does not include municipal storm sewer systems and man-made ditches. This is something that was brought up at the League of Municipalities convention this year, and it was important to do that because the EPA is talking about determining where the federal rules go, and we would just assume not have every one of our storm, our storm drains and every man-made ditch in the United States all federal. I think that's a little too far of a reach. The next, and maybe I should stop at each one of these sections and see if the council has any comments. In fact, we're presenting it tonight. We can talk about it further at, at, at our work session or just at the next city council meeting officially approve it, whatever the council would like. Are there any comments about the federal?
Comments?
Yeah, ironically, maybe the most important thing is, is that Marketplace Fairness Act, which is trying to make sure that all the sales that go through, we are all buying so much stuff now, not in bricks and mortars, but through Amazon and through everything else. And as much as possible, I know some of the companies have voluntarily added sales tax, but much of the economy is floating out there, and the sales tax, which cities, counties, and states have depended upon for basically local services, you know, are slipping away. So this makes it fair, fair to the bricks and mortar, the fellow that, lady that opens up a business and takes a risk in our community should be treated the same way taxation-wise as some warehouse company in Oregon. And so that's, that's the idea. State priority issues on financial, the, these are the, basically the same all the way across as we had last year. It is making sure that we don't have unfunded mandates, that, that when they do tax reform, it doesn't come out of city revenues, that the sales tax formula should be fair to cities, and now specifically privileged licenses, which to the city of Gastonia is about $265,000. That if they abolish that, the governor and the senate and the house leadership last year said they would try to find a replacement. So we would like to, you know, have that, that honored again. Okay, economic development, we've reworded both of these. This is state-level incentives. This is when we're competing against South Carolina, other states. The, right now, the state of North Carolina is not quite as competitive as our surrounding states. We don't really have a program. The governor proposed one, and it was not accepted. The other one is historic tax credits, which we, we know very well in this city make a difference. Then local governance, this is a home rule such for like local preference mechanisms for purchasing and procuring items, amending the annexation statutes to close doughnut holes, give us a little more flexibility there, and design and aesthetic standards for new development, making sure that we still have that as an option. This is when a developer would, would put it on their, you know, in other words, we would allow it as an option for a developer if they say, look, this is what we're going to show you. Many years ago, we weren't allowed to show any of that so that, that the developer couldn't say, no, no, that's not what I'm going to build. This is what I'm going to build. This is what, I'd like, you know, show you what I'm going to do. So this just allows us to continue to have that option. The next, utilities, the, there's no change with utilities at all because we talk about the additional fines for illegal dumping, removing the coal ash from being close to our water source. Those are all the same. ABC control, again, we believe our ABC system is, is good. It helps to regulate the use of alcohol in a, in a, in a professional manner. Also, the, there are proceeds that, from the ABC system that directly go into agencies that, that, that support 12-step programs and things like that, and also other funds that come to the city. And for the city, we, we average about $500,000 a year. That's a penny on the property tax. And where that money goes is to support our police department and recreation departments, and it's important to keep that revenue to the city. Transportation, a few things we reworded. The, the second item deals with improving connections to Gastonia Charlotte Douglas International Airport. That's what we said last year. The, the report that we got from the Alliance on Growth, they recommended the Catawba crossings, at least doing the two bridges, one over the Catawba River, the other over the South Fork. That would take it to New Hope Road. That would give relief for the southeastern part of the county that's experiencing high growth. And you would protect that corridor. So that, we, we put that there. Provide additional pedestrian improvements along Franklin Boulevard corridor. We've added that. Then another one, the, this is amend the current DOT ranking system for projects that provide direct connectivity to economic generators such as the intermodal freight transfer facility at Charlotte Douglas. Secretary of Transportation was talking about doing that and also doing the same thing in Wilmington to the port, that if you have a major generator like that, you get some more points. And then we're, another one we've added is treat all local governments equally when it comes to relocation of utilities. Right now, if you are a small city, you don't have to pay anything. If you're a medium-sized or large city, you pay 100%. And how that worked is, is for instance, when Cramerton had a utility and it was work to be done, it didn't cost Cramerton anything. But when we combined, then by combining, we had to pay 100% of those costs. So there's actually a disincentive to do what really we know we all should do, which is combine our utility systems. So they're more efficient. So we would like to get that inefficiency out. Under parks and recreation, there's the continuation of the Partif grants. That's that 50/50 grant that we've used at Martha Rivers and many other places, as well as cities across the state. The museum, there's, the grassroots science collaborative that helps museums across the state. Personnel, that's the same thing we had last year. The three, public safety are all new. The, one talks about, the first one, city supports legislation to address the problem of maintaining video records resulting from police body cameras. We're in this conversation all, all, everyone has a police department in this country. And one of the things that's, that's really, that you identify as an issue at the very beginning in every state, are state records laws, and how do you maintain this? How do you keep this? So some uniformity at the state level, so that, and some reasonableness at the state level, so that as we go forward, all jurisdictions, Gastonia and everyone else can do this in the proper way. The second item is oppose any legislation that would undermine Gastonia's residential rental property remedial action program. A very successful program that we have here. The state actually had some bills that were going to remove that authority from us. Some cities actually use this as a revenue source. We don't. We, we use it as a way to maintain neighborhoods. And if there's a neighborhood problem, to work with the landlord to resolve that problem. We think ours is, is really the model, and that that should be maintained. If they want to go after cities that are using it as a revenue source, that's a different matter. But don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. And the, the third one is support legislation to require courts, and this is a, something that came from the league meeting as well, to review gang injunctions issued under the North Carolina general statutes, that after a year, they have to essentially start over with paperwork. And some of these gang investigations last longer, and so there needs to be some relief there for law enforcement agencies. So that is the, the list, and if you have any additions, subtractions, or clarifications, I'd be happy to go.
Well, Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Kimball, Mr. Pearson.
Ed, the one I want to go back to is transportation, and it's the 321 I-85. Can we just ask DOT to just give us an exit off of 3, 85 South going to 321 North? Just so the traffic will start flowing a little easier and it's not being backed up on 85. Just give us that ramp. I don't want a whole bunch done to it. Just start with the ramp.
That would actually be a very, pretty straightforward project. I know Flip has been having some conversations with the state. Basically where we are now is because they're using federal funds, they got to go through the environmental policies, and you got to have hearings, and you got to do all this. And what they've done through the environmental is this complicated thing that they have. And anytime they make a change, they have to then kind of go back through all that, I believe, but.
That is, but councilman, the ramp you're referring to is part of the project. Now, I don't know if you're asking just to do that ramp at this point in time and be done with it. If, if, if that's the case, I certainly wouldn't recommend we ask the state to change the project now. But the 85 South to 321 North ramp is part of the project as currently designed.
How close do you think we are?
Well, at, at least from the info they're giving us is 2016. They hope to start right-of-way acquisition, 2017, 2018 actual construction.
Sometime in my lifetime, that interchange will be fixed. I, I believe it.
We hope so.
But the thing is, Flip, just ask them right now, all we need is, all we need is that ramp for right now, just to start. Show us some good faith by putting in that ramp first thing. Because I know, I know it's a bigger project, and they want to roll out all they want to roll out, but this is an easy fix. If they just concentrate on doing the one thing, they could always, you know, do what they have to do later on, but let's start with the ramp.
We'll certainly be glad to make that request. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Kimball?
Thank you, Your Honor. Ed, in the, in the area of public safety, and specifically bullet point number one, with regard to the, the burgeoning problems of maintaining the video records resulting from the police body cameras, I, I feel somewhat strongly that we would also incorporate in there some type of monetary assistance in the form of grants to offset the cost and especially the initial and the maintenance costs that are going to be associated with these projects. The latest that I've read on the initiative from the federal government is it's more than likely only going to be a 50/50 grant match from the federal government on the purchase of the body cameras. That is not enough money to equip all of the law enforcement officers on the street in the, in the United States. And it's very sketchy at best, if, if any monies or how long the monies would last for the maintenance. And frankly, they could be catastrophic expenses depending on how long those clouds or that specific database needs to be maintained. Because when we think about theoretically every interaction of every police officer on the street every day for their career, it's a tremendous amount of data. Now, obviously, it's going to be boiled down to what's going to be recorded and what's not, but you can get the, the gravity of that when you think about how much theoretically interactions that is within our state. So hopefully the legislature can give us a little bit of implementation help as well as the legislation. Thank you.
Just a couple of points. Under economic development, could we specifically, just as we've done with the state historic preservation tax credit, also mention the film credits? I know that they're talking about a film grant program or something, but I, I think that, because, I mean, that's had an impact here. I know they've kind of nicknamed Wilmington Filmington because they're the ones really pushing for that, but certainly that's had an economic impact in our area, and I think it would, we'd be remiss not to specifically mention something, whether it be film grants or credits, whatever they want to do. And the other one is, I don't know if we need to add it because I know some legislation was enacted on it, or at least discussed. I don't know where that ended up, and the chief may be able to help us with mopeds.
It, it was passed. Chief, do you have any further information? This is on mopeds. Legislature passed some legislation.
Everybody knows that's my little pet peeve that I want to keep up with it.
Requiring, I think, some insurance. Are you aware of that?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, we'll get some information on that, clarify, and get a copy of the legislation. They did pass something. They required helmets. I don't think it went as far as some people wanted it to go, but I think it, it tightened it up somewhat. But we'll, we'll get, I know the legislature did something last year.
I, I knew they had done something. I didn't know when it took effect or what it had, and if we needed to follow up and ask for it to be tighter or stricter.
The police attorney, Stephanie Webster, is really well-versed in that, and I wish I could repeat what she told me about it, but she does know, and we will get that to you.
Yeah.
Okay? Because she did give me a report after it was passed, and I don't think it was effective yet. Maybe this January it was effective, but it was a delayed response. It did not go as far as people wanted it to, but it did do something.
I just have one question of Mr. Bombardier. How long has 321 and 85 interchange been on the TIP?
I'll, I will check and get you an answer, but I know it's been discussed for a very, very long time.
At least.
Probably 15, 20 years, Ed? I'm, I'm guessing, but I can find out exactly how long it's officially been on the TIP.
Well, and, and, and that's the point, is that it's been on the TIP for, for a long, long time, okay? And I guess I just don't understand why it keeps not being done. I mean, that's just pretty simple, and I, I know that that, you don't have an answer for that, but, you know, it seems like... And I know that you don't have an answer for that, but, you know, it seems like that is a dangerous intersection in the state of North Carolina, not just in Gastonia, but in the whole state. And for whatever reason, we cannot get the appropriate attention to that, for whatever reason. And I just think that that is something that needed to be said. Thank you.
Any other questions of Ed?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Next, I think, is the draft agenda for the planning workshop is item five, which will be number five back here. Ed?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, on exhibit five, you have the two-page draft agenda. And this has us starting at 8:30 on February the 7th and going to 4 o'clock. We have a lot of, we'll break around noon for lunch at City Hall and Second Floor. And we have a lot of information here. I don't know that we'll get through all of it. We'll get through most of it. But if there's something that's here that you think shouldn't be, or something that should be here that isn't, let us know. We're going to go to, we're going to be, we're putting materials together right now, actually, and we'll be sending you something shortly. So is this what you want to talk about at the strategic planning workshop?
In other words, if not let you know, or addition let you know? Yes, sir.
Ed, at a prior meeting, just, I believe it would be under C, Economic Development, I have requested, and they did not arrive at City Hall yet, the latest copies of the Carolina Freight Mobility Plan, but I think that that's going to be something that's going to be rolled out. I would probably venture this year, 2015. And I did make another request for those documents today that we would all have, each one of us would have a packet to look over that, because I think it's something that's going to positively, has the potential to positively impact transportation for the next decade. And I will, again, do my best to make sure that they are here before our meeting. As I said, I did request them again today. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Under development initiatives, Ed, I know we have Franklin Boulevard, Center City Ballpark redevelopment, and right there, kind of with Center City Ballpark redevelopment, can we add the performing arts facility? I know they had mentioned that they would like to come and at least speak to the council during our budget planning to kind of bring us up to date on what they are doing and how they are working with the Center City Ballpark. I think it would be a good idea to give them five minutes of our meeting to tell us what they're doing there, because I think that goes hand in hand with the Center City Ballpark. And just kind of let them know that we'll add them to the agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll, are you through on the workshop?
Yes, sir.
You pretty much told us what's needed.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Okay. Item six is the city attorney's report. Mr. Smith?
No report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. City manager's report. Mr. Munn?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Rodney Wilson, as you mentioned, our employee passed away suddenly over the weekend. I understand he worked on Saturday, and it was very sudden. The visitation is Wednesday, the 21st, 6 o'clock PM to 8 o'clock PM at Green's Funeral Home. And then they're going to have a service Thursday, the 22nd, at 2 o'clock PM. And so, a longtime employee with the city, and we're certainly, the families are deep with sympathies to the family. The visitation is Wednesday, the 21st, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Green's Funeral Home, 321 South, I assume, I think.
Yeah.
Today is the...
That's tomorrow.
Yes, that is tomorrow. And the only thing else I would say is that Joe Davis, remember him well, and a really wonderful city council person who cared a lot about this city. He was always an honorable person. He was funny. He would be able to work with others. He was just a very, very good person, and it was a real honor to work with him. And then Ed Stowe, all the big projects, whether it's the hospital, the college, our whole utility system, the water and sewer system that he chaired, transportation system, Ed Stowe was behind all of those things. And a lot of what we have in the city is directly the result of Ed Stowe and his vision. So, again, fond memories and deep sympathies to the family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City Council, Mr. Gray.
No report, sir.
Mr. Pearson.
No report as such. Just want to say thank you to the entities that organized and put together the MLK activities on Monday. Attended the one here at the Plaza and also at the Irwin Center. Both very, very nice ceremonies, certainly worthy of a man that we like to remember. And just one other thing I'd like to ask. Couple weeks ago, or a couple meetings ago, we had the group that came forward to ask for some type of marker to signify where the school used to be, the Hines School. And I know we'd had some conversations that, you know, maybe there were some other things. Have we had any conversations with that group? I know I spoke to one. About other markers?
We have, we met out on York Road, and there's a property owned by Community Development that's right next to Martin's Funeral Home and right, and that's where they would like to put the sign. The wording for the sign, I believe we have a meeting tomorrow at 4 o'clock with some representatives of that group to work on the wording. There was a question about, do we want to just move the sign that's down, that is where the, I guess the apartments are, and just move it up to the road? And so we're going to have that conversation with that group. But Ed Sadler and Mickey Sadler and a whole group of folks are, yeah, very much involved with that. Their reunion is August, I guess, and we have to do some ordering of that sign by the end of February. But that's moving forward.
And has there been discussion on any other markers?
The other marker that we're looking at is maybe, and see, that...
I mean, for different properties or for different events, so to speak. You know, how you have the state historical markers? I was thinking more in lines of maybe a city program where we have city historical markers for some of the things, some of the buildings that are no longer with us, that have been torn down, or maybe events or that took place that the city would recognize.
I think it's a wonderful idea. And along with, the focus is to help them to make sure that they get this sign for their reunion.
Reunion, right. I know that was a depressing issue.
The other thing, and actually, Mr. Biggers, he's part of this too, had done a sketch of the street network. And we're working with Planning Department and about maybe turning that into a, as if you would go to national parks, places like that, you see a layout of a street and what, where things used to be. And so we're looking at trying to put something like that either on the same side of the street or on the opposite side of the street to delineate where the square used to be, where the businesses used to be, and that, where that community was with Walnut Street and everything. So we're working on that. The priorities on the, first, on the high school.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Gallagher?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. On Thursday, the 15th, The Shield opened up the solar system, and it's great for children to go to, to see. When you go in to see the exhibit itself, it goes into all the planet that we have. And while you walk in, the lights above, they made it look like stars. They put like little LED lights above. And it's a really excellent exhibit. So if you get a chance, they just opened it up, and it'll be up there for about four or five months. So please check it out. Saw it Thursday, and really did a wonderful job. Also, on Friday, the 16th, I was at Hunter Hus to see Sylvia Bryan Hatchell with Mayor Pro Tem Craig and Mayor Bridgeman. And they dedicated the court to Ms. Hatchell, the UNC basketball coach, women's basketball coach, who's won three NCAAs. Really, that's an amazing feat. And she has her home route, you know, her roots are right here in town, and she's a great speaker. Had a great time. Also, on Sunday, Crisis Pregnancy Center took over Brookley Baptist Church on Robinson Road, and they converted it into, that's where they're going to start seeing clients and stuff. If you haven't had a chance to go by there, you're more than welcome. Ansel Overby would be glad to give you a tour. And also yesterday, Martin Luther King Day at the 10:30 service across the street here, and also the NCAA that they, not the NCAA.
The NCAA.
Yeah. That was over at Irwin Center. Was a great time. And just want to say thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kimball?
Several items. First off, Flip, I know that we're in the midst of, and I'm asking you this to get an idea, if we're going to have any part of it done before our first retreat on the airport survey and what we've been doing with some background there on gauging the interest of additional hangars and such. How are we doing with that?
Councilman, we have developed the draft survey. I think we had told the Transportation Committee we would bring that back to them before getting that out, but we'll be happy to send it out ahead of time if that's committee's desire. But survey, draft survey is ready. We were looking at a Transportation Committee meeting either the first or second week in February and had that on the agenda at that point.
Thank you. Secondly, I did speak with the, I have been at an ongoing dialogue with the manager at the new Walmart Neighborhood Market regarding traffic. And so far, I want to say that no news is good news. We haven't had any issues really to speak of. She was, I did speak to her as late as yesterday, and everything at this point seems to be flowing pretty well. I know, Flip, we've assigned a specific employee that's monitoring that situation as far as traffic flow and motor vehicle accidents and stuff, but at this point, cautiously optimistic about where we're going with this. It seems to be working okay for them. Lastly, I'd like to congratulate the staff at all of our ABC stores. We reached a milestone in December of 2014 where we, it was our first million-dollar month in the history of the ABC stores in Gastonia. Approximate numbers was $1,126,387. And I thought that was just, that's a heck of a lot of work, and it was a lot of sales, and everybody did very well. And lastly, Ed, we probably should schedule in this quarter of the year a personnel meeting. How many items might we have to bring forth on that?
I'll check.
Okay. It's been a while since we had one. I know that we have the year changed. We may want to update on some other things there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think it's all been pretty well covered, places we've been, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, it's 7:00. So if there's no other comments or questions, I'd ask for someone to make a motion to adjourn.
Amen.
Second.
Goodbye. Didn't you say seven? Seven thirty.